And now, we will have opening remarks by the city manager.
No, we can't.
Remarks.
No, the city council meeting is being postponed shortly. We're just waiting for a third city council member to show up so we have a quorum. And it could be as late as 5:30.
Cocktails.
I'd like to call to order the Avalon City Council meeting of Tuesday. And we will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Please begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
And maybe stand for a moment to remember Tina Bosi, and the 50 victims and those injured in the New Zealand recent bombing. Please be seated. And if we may please have the roll call.
Councilmember Hernandez.
Here.
Councilmember Olson.
Here.
Mayor Marshall.
Here.
I'd like to announce that councilmembers, helpers, and casters will not be in attendance tonight.
Thank you very much. Okay, a presentation. Southern California Edison has your part with us.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Adeline Young with Southern California Edison. So, I have great news. Catalina's officially out of Stage One water conservation. On February the 15th, the company submitted a Tier One advice letter notifying the CPUC that we are lifting Stage One. So, this advice letter was effective upon submission and is subject to a 30-day review by the CPUC Water Division. So, that was March 15th last Friday. So, now that we're out of Stage One water conservation, I know there's been a lot of questions about water allocations. And I just want to address it a little bit to let you know our water allocations are subject to a process spelled out in our water tariff under Rule 3. And to request an allocation, the applicant must complete a questionnaire and submit plans. As of today, an applicant requesting an allocation would be added on to the waitlist. Currently, there are about 19 projects that are on the waitlist, and we have not approved any of the projects that are on the waitlist. So, following the prolonged drought that we've had here on the island, Southern California Edison will be assessing the capacity of the water resources to determine the amount of water available to allocate consistent with the allocation process outlined in our water tariff. So, that's where we're at in regards to the allocation. Wanted to kind of talk about the D-SAL enhancement project. So, we'll be completing the final design of the D-SAL enhancement project. The anticipated date is around Q4 of this year, and we're hoping to secure the construction permits by June of 2020. So, with those milestones, that will allow us to maintain a Q4 2020 operational date for the enhanced D-SAL plan.
And explain to -- is that so you can run them simultaneously? What is that all about?
This is, we're talking about more seawater wells. We're talking about improvement to the plant itself, basically to increase the capacity of the plant.
So, you would probably move on with that even if we don't get the -- even if you don't get the Prop 1 funds for that?
Well, actually, that, we were, like, let me talk about the Prop 1's funds.
Oh, okay.
And then I can kind of address your question.
Okay.
Just to give you an update, that there was a conference call last week with DWR and the city staff. And so, DWR indicated that they're reviewing it, and they're clarifying some of the key points. And they expect to have the initial review completed by March 29th, which is pretty soon, actually. And they're hoping to make a recommendation of award as early as April 2019. And this is pending any additional information or clarification that's needed. They have not made a decision on the amount to be awarded. And they're also continuing to evaluate the city's DAC designation. That's a disadvantaged community designation. So, we have stressed to them that even though we're out of a drought, it's still really important that we have, you know, increased D-SAL capacity. And so, the grant award will be really important in making sure that the ratepayers do not bear a huge brunt of the cost of improving the system.
All right.
And that concludes my report.
So, on the water allocation waitlist. So, are we going to be back in that situation where Edison can approve them because you think they have the water, but then we get the plans at a later date and we go, wow, all of this is adding up to a lot of water? If the sustainability issues aren't dealt with that we're concerned with, and I think you are too, and I guess our concern has been, or at least I'm sure it's not just me, so we award all, you award all of these permits, and then whoops, then we end up in a drought, and now it's a bigger problem than it was previously.
You raise a really great point, and that's the reason why we are assessing the capacity of the system.
Okay.
We want to make sure that it can actually, we can actually sustain it.
Great, good. Is there anything else, Adeline?
That's it.
Any comments, questions? Oh, there's a question in the back of the room, if you don't mind.
Hi, good to see you. Leslie Warner, 306 Whitley. Is there any way that we can continue having some kind of conservation policies in place? Should I ask them one at a time and you answer one at a time?
Oh, sure. We strongly encourage that folks on the island continue to practice good water conservation measures because, you know, it's just a good thing to do, I think, just for our state in general. In terms of the conservation policy, I think a lot of it is really, well, so we're governed by our tariff. And right now, we're out of Stage One, and there aren't any restrictions or requirements. The city, I think, can probably impose some if they wish. And I don't know if that's something that the city attorney wants to address.
The city has already imposed, I mean, I know we have some, I can review them, but we have a separate policy that regardless of whether Edison issues a permit, if a building permit or a development permit, any kind of permit requires city approval, that the city makes an independent determination as to whether there's sufficient water, regardless of Edison. So, we still have that power, but I can review our ordinance. I think it was tied to the various stages of Edison, and we can decouple that. I can also, because Governor Brown imposed several longstanding conservation measures, and I'm not certain if those have been lifted or not.
So, because I was reading the letter that was sent from Edison up there, and, but maybe to not understand, so right now, somebody could just get their hose and run it and don't need to put the nozzles on.
That's correct.
Okay, or they don't need to use the three, the gallon buckets and that kind of thing? So, yeah, I think we would, I think there's probably some of us would like to see that still intact, but I don't know if we as a council can then impose, can impose that or if we can bring that forward for discussion.
Yes, you can.
City manager.
Just several years ago, in interacting with Mr. Height out at Edison, because there was one caveat in our city ordinance that didn't coincide with their tariffs, and so I know that our code is supposed to align with it, but we could be very aggressive in encouraging the water rationing. That was a few years ago.
Right.
As an information only type deal?
No, we could actually, you could, as part of your police power, regardless of Edison, we can look at what regulations you can put in in your code, independent of Edison.
They argued that with us before.
Yeah.
Did we, have we lost that argument?
At that time, we did, yes.
Okay, okay. And so, Leslie, if you have a list, that might be, if we're going to come and look at that, then you might want to, you can read your list here, but you can provide us with that list, and we can address those if we go forward with that on a city level as well. Mm-hmm, but if you want to, would you want to read your list for fun? Please.
So, I was just curious now, how much D-SAL water you're producing, or how do you come up with some kind of an equation? So, are we just going to use the reservoir now, or are we, is it 50/50, or are you, you know, figuring it out as you go?
I don't have, I was looking for the latest D-SAL report. We haven't issued it yet, so it should be coming up shortly. But in terms of D-SAL, I just want to let you know that, you know, it's actually the more expensive of the two sources of water, and it would be better to be able to use water from the rain. And so, Edison does try to maximize or minimize the cost to the ratepayers. And that would be, the preference is to use water that's cheaper.
So, along that line, though, my bill doesn't break down when you put saltwater and fresh wa, fresh D-SAL water in my lines versus the other. I mean, it's not like I'm giving the D-SAL rate and then I get the reservoir rate when you run the reservoir. So, it's all still the same to us, but are you, are you talking then in terms of maintenance? Because it costs you more, then you have to bring those fees on to the ratepayer.
We don't, we don't separate the rates.
Exactly.
It's all bundled in one, but in order to minimize expenses and the cost, that would be the best way to do it.
That's what, on that end, okay.
Thank you. I think it would be fascinating for the community to know that when the reservoir gets to 800 feet, then, you know, you're going to use the D-SAL more. Just how does this work, since it's all new territory? And then, moving forward, is there any report or information you can give us on the status of the deep bed rock wells on the Gulf Coast?
I don't have an update on that. And is that, is that the, I'm trying to think of which project that I can help you with? Okay, I don't have an update on that. What was the other question? That was it.
Yeah. What are your kind of calculations for when you stop using so much reservoir water and more D-SAL? Like, how does that, as time goes on?
So, that's, I wish the operations supervisor was here with me because he could probably talk to you about that, but from what I've heard from him, a lot of it really depends on, so some of the factors that are considered is if the plant is running, we don't just want to turn it off and turn it off. It's not, it's not something that you can just turn it off and turn it right back on. So, that's one of the factors that's considered. The other factor, as we mentioned, is that, you know, it is, the water in the reservoir is much cheaper than D-SAL water, so that would be another factor to consider as well, too. So, those are only two factors that I can think of, and I'm a late person.
Ms. Warner, I can say that the agreement between the city and Edison recognizes that Edison is required to do its best to keep the reservoir at a level that is sustainable and to use D-SAL when the reservoir starts to go down. And so, that's one of the goals of the agreement, and if you want, I can provide you that agreement so, because that kind of provides a guidance in the general agreement that we entered into with Edison to make certain that they don't just start the D-SAL when it's at 600.
And that's, that's a really good point. I don't want to suggest that we're only drawing down from the reservoir as well, because there's certain water quality issues that we have to consider, and then there's that agreement that the city attorney just brought up.
So, it's my understanding, then, that you're reevaluating the safe annual yield, and so, will that be something that you will notice to all of us so that we'll understand, like, what the safe annual yield is in moving forward with allocations? That's all connected.
So, you're getting a lot of information that I'm kind of learning for the first time, but I'm just, I'm wondering if the safe annual yield that you're talking about has to do with our assessment of the capacity of our water resources? It sounds like it may be the same thing?
Yeah.
And if that's the case, we're looking into it, we're collecting the data, and we will be reviewing it, and we will come back and share that information.
Paula Patterson, 221 Whitley. My questions, or question and comment, is that it's so complex, but I was under the understanding that we had a rate hike. We've had one and two, or two more to come over the years. So, and that is based on the fact that because of conservation, we didn't use as much water as was estimated to the PUC about using water. So, I just wanted to bring it up to local residents, et cetera, that we've had one water hike and we're having two more over the year ahead. So, water's not getting any cheaper, and just, I think that's a good enough reason, too, if not another one, just to conserve water.
Thank you for coming.
I just want to clarify that the rate adjustment is, a large part of it is due to the fact that there were expenses that came about as a result of the drought. We had the decent, new D-SAL plant, and so there were a lot of expenses from the drought, and that's what the last, that's what the adjustment is addressing specifically, as well as.
The million gallon tank and that kind of thing as well?
Yeah.
Yeah, but that's not our, that's other town.
Yes.
That's, that's their gig.
So, that might just answer my question, but I was going to ask about the increased capacity, and the way I understand it, whether we use the D-SAL water or not, we still are charged for it. And I was wondering if you guys considered a pipeline or a pump system that would actually retain this water instead of the water we don't use going somewhere else? I think if we're pumping, if we're making D-SAL water and we're being charged for it, and if we're not using it right now, maybe it should be charged somewhere, or like it should be stored somewhere?
Well, I can respond to that a little bit. And the Prop 1 applications that they filled out, that was one of them, because there's a line that goes up to the Wrigley Reservoir, and it's in, it's in bad shape. So, I think one of the plans was to get that rebuilt and then pump that D-SAL water up to Wrigley. Am I correct, Oli? Okay.
Which line is that? Is that the one that comes behind the school, or is that the one from?
Yeah.
So, anyway, we answered that question for you. Jim Luchahan.
Hi, Jim Luchahan, 323 Catalina, and President, CEO of the Chamber of Commerce and Visitors Bureau. It seems timely to mention that we are in the midst of launching a variety of initiatives on our website at the chamber, addressing visiting consumers on how they can be good stewards of this place when they come to visit it, and water conservation will remain one of our top subjects. So, I just wanted to mention that we're doing it under the umbrella of Care for Catalina, and during the public comments, I'm going to make an announcement about that as well.
Okay, great, thank you. Any other questions? Or?
Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Adeline. Okay. Public hearing?
I think that was a mistake.
Okay.
A leftover.
I forgot to ask. Okay, are there any announcements or written communications?
We've received one written communication, and that's regarding item number three on the agenda, and council was all provided that in an email.
Okay. And department head reports.
Good evening. Bob Greenlaw, Director of Public Works. A few items. Okay, so, the first item, the recycling trash receptacles are now been distributed around town. We've received 95 units, and each one of those has a recycling unit and a landfill unit. And that's what it says right on the front so that the users know where, what they're putting in there, where it's going to. So, that's complete, and then the next step is to ID the cans with labels on them, and those will have actually an ID number for each one of those, so that now we know a location and a numbering for those, so that if somebody has a problem with one of those, they can, it'll be also a phone number that says that needs to be serviced, so that we can increase our service level to maintain it for what it is right now, what you have, brand-new ones, we want to maintain them that way. And so, we'll have a few that are left in reserve so that we can immediately swap those out when, you know, a few years down the road, when they do start showing some signs of distress, so that then we can take that to repair them right away, so they won't be sitting there for weeks and months at a time, not being in good shape. And then, really, the next step after that is to tally, and the reason that we received the grant for those, a major portion of the funding, was to increase the diversions of the beverage containers from going to the landfill. And so, that effort will be documented next month and then also in July. So, we're looking for volunteers to be able to count what's going in those recycling containers on a few days so that we can document that, and that's one of the steps within our requirements of our grant.
So, we're looking for volunteers in the community?
Volunteers.
They should contact Jordan Monroe?
Yes, so staff, council members, public, anybody that wants to come in and do that with us. The ADA ramp in the Sumner and Beacon intersection, so the ADA ramp project will start this next week. Remember, that's the project that you approved for the CDVG funding that replaces all the ramps at Sumner and Beacon, and also at Beacon and Catalina, so it brings all those ramps into compliance. That being said, we were intending to get out there and put that temporary median in the middle of Sumner and Beacon intersection, but the rain hampered us at that time, and then now we have the project coming on with the ramp project. So, all of that will roll out at once. We're doing that, the crosswalks, the ramps, and then that median, be all installed at one time.
And what's, what's the approximate time? Because I know we're all getting hit up about the crosswalks.
Yeah. So, the ramps should take a matter of three weeks for the, those two intersections, and we do have our new paint. We do now have a parking lot paint striper. So, now we can put a professional stripe on the road in a very quick fashion, so you'll see the improved quality of those. And we would put those as soon as the ramps are in and we're not tearing up everything out there, we'd be ready to paint those. And I was just out today, working with staff on that new paint rig to make sure that we're ready to go on it. So, that's good news. We also, with that, can put some little pieces of striping on the road where needed, not to stripe up the whole community, but if needed, there could be at certain segments, like we were talking at, the old Vons Crossing, how we would lead in a little bit of centerline in there, just to, so that there was something different as you entered into the area where that crossing was. And so, then that alerts people that there may be something different that you're, as you travel through that segment, you know? So, those are some of the things that we can do with that. Also, that'll help us maintain all our stop legends, stop bars, you know, at a higher level, because it'll be quicker, so that we can get actually two people on staff doing that, one putting a stencil down, one spraying at the same time. Okay? And then Casino Way restroom, the demo's underway in the interior, and so that's being done by Public Works. And then Dave Thompson Construction was the low bidder for the plumbing carpentry and tile subcontract. Remember that we were going to have pieces of it done by Public Works as training, and then the other was going to be subcontract, and you had previously delegated authority to award that contract to the city manager, okay, when the plans were approved. The Veo Casino Arch, the rehabilitation of the Veo Casino Arch is out, is advertising, inviting bids right now. Those bids close on the 29th of this month, and the scope of the work is to repair the stucco and repaint the structure. So, make that the best it can be. And then we have rain forecast, 50% rain forecast for Wednesday, Thursday of this week. So, you know, and we're, Public Works is ready, but again, that's what gets our slides going, and of interest is that slide by the yacht club and reactivating that. So, after the last rain, Public Works moved the K-rail with the rockfall fencing on top from a piece of it down there by Lover's Cove, so that we could protect from that rockfall in that one area. So, we moved, we moved three pieces of K-rail there to make sure that that was, had a higher level of protection. So, that's what I have for you tonight.
I believe everyone loves the trashcans. I haven't heard any negatives at all. Everybody's extremely excited. My opinion and some others is that perhaps in some areas, it might be a little overdone. If you look around Lloyd's, there are, between Lloyd's and the Blue Water, there are nine trashcans, which mean basically 18. I'm glad to know you have a few in reserve, but I don't know, and I don't know how Eddie Vega, you all, I'm sure, are going to be talking to Eddie Vega and seeing how that's going. I haven't spoken to him at all, but, but it just, it just seems a little overdone.
So, that's the first take, and, you know, we will evaluate whether they're getting used, and definitely we don't want to be using the real estate or requiring the collection of something that's not necessary. I think we should allow them to be out there during our peak times.
Oh, definitely, yes.
And then that's when we would see the input.
Yes, oh, yeah, and in the summertime, I would, I would think for sure.
Yeah, so there's that, that balance between having too many and, but you want enough, and then also you don't want to be servicing them too much when, because that's also out there in the public. You bring the servicing and, you know, three times a day, where if we could service it a couple times a day.
But I, but I'm curious, if I was a trash picker-upper and I go in, I look at them and I go, well, it's only a third of the way full, but what the heck, I'm here, so I'll pick it up and throw it in the thing. And then you're going to go through a lot more plastic bags that are going to be in the landfill.
Yeah, so we could reduce it down, you know, so it's that, that sweet spot, you know?
Exactly.
Yeah. Okay.
And, yeah, just the, and I'm sorry, just the other thing is, I don't know if we're going to do anything about cigarette butts, but already people are starting to put them out on the top.
Yes, we are. We're working on that.
Okay, thank you.
And to get receptacles for the cigarette butts.
Right, okay.
I want, it's also very important that that was very much a team effort to get the trashcans out there.
Yes.
Public Works was just a piece of that. I mean, you know, all departments within this agency were really out there working to help to get those, from procuring them to actually getting them installed. So, it was a huge team effort, and it went really smoothly.
They did, they're great.
Once they came onto the island.
They're great, thank you.
Are any of those on the pier? I haven't been out in the pier.
Yes.
They are?
Yes.
Okay, since you're here, though, chairlift? Since Pam's not here to ask today.
It's been measured, and, you know, so it's been ordered.
Okay.
And then, then, you know.
Because we awarded the bid, right?
Yes.
Yes.
And so, we're waiting for that to be manufactured, and then the install is really come on for a day, get everything here, and then really install it in a day.
Okay, great.
So, yeah, so that, that was done, they were actually here last week.
So, how long is that going to be? A week, two weeks, maybe?
No, I think it's going to be more like four weeks to five weeks for that to be procured, but that's what we advertised before, that it was, that it takes a little while for once the product, because it needs to be manufactured.
Okay, I get, I get that.
It's specific for that stairway.
Right, yeah, it's a tricky stairway.
And so, they have to mold some of the rail that goes up for that to ride on to that, so that's what it takes. So, we're almost there.
Yeah, thank you, Bob. Appreciate it.
Good evening, Captain John Hawking. I just have one quick incident to talk about. Last Saturday, Friday night for Saturday, it was 1:00 in the morning, Saturday morning, deputy down on Front Street sees a five-year-old girl walking by herself in her pajamas, and she's holding a small bag that has her clothes in it. The deputy basically stops her, starts talking to her, and with the help of the public, determines where she lives, goes and contacts the parents, and it was the child's first sleepover at a friend's house. Middle of the night, she got scared, wanted to go home. She didn't tell any parents on either side of the residence, and the deputy was able to determine that the parents were very concerned, no crimes had been committed, but with the assistance of the public, we were able to get the child set back home, and she's doing fine, and everything's good.
Oh, wonderful.
That's it. Anybody have any questions for me?
Happy, happy ending, though.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Good evening, council. As for the harbor, I have a little demonstration here, or PowerPoint. I would like to go on. Jordan? There it is. As you know, we went, took the float number one over to the mainland, the mole float, to get it rehabbed. We took it to Larson's Boat Shop, and as you can see the float here in the picture, it's pretty beat up, torn up, beat up. And so it's part of our, our project going forward to start rehabbing all of our floats throughout the next year or so. So we took this float over to Larson's, we towed it over. In doing so, not only did we use our own boats, our own patrol officers, but we had some great radar training and GPS training and towing training for three of our personnel over and two of our personnel back. So that was, that really worked out well for us. Over in the boatyard, this is part of the marking the deck, getting ready. You notice the cleats in the background, how bent and torn up they are, the rust, all those, those plywood there has been resurfaced, refiberglassed, and renon skidded. And so that was part of the, the job. Here's another picture of the, the float replacing the deck out of the water. They hadn't sandblasted it yet there. They're just getting the deck off to be able to expose everything. So as you know, during that three-week period, we must've had two weeks of rain. So everything got slowed down tremendously. Here's another picture of inside the, the float, and you can see a pontoon that goes around the entire float. That pontoon is, is what keeps the, keeps it buoyant. So, yeah, we, in the process of doing this, if you remember during our request for not to exceed money, we, we talked about doing some ultrasound metallers, metal, metalist, I can't pronounce.
Metalurgy.
Anyway, came down and did a ultrasound on the metal. And the metal, surprisingly, is in, is in very good shape around that pontoon. So that was a, a nice thing. Underneath, this is after, it's all sandblasted, bottom painted. We went to a larger zinc there, you see them on the sides, and you notice the, the netting up around the, the arms there. And that's to keep the seals out. When they put those in originally, seals would jump up on there and they'd lay in there and they'd, you know, poop all over the place, and it was pretty, pretty rancid. So we had that, that was, you know, added to it, added to the extra. In the process of doing that, we had to reform and re-fix the ramp. And we had to chisel away a lot of the dead, bad concrete and reform it, re-poured new cement on it. So, you know, that project was being done while I was gone. This is our boat, bringing them back into the harbor. Again, we took two boats over to be able to maneuver it into the ways over there at Al Larson's Boat Shop. And again, it was just one of those things that you, you can read about and you can try to train on, but without the wind and the swell and the actual doing it, you don't, it's hard to explain it. So these guys really got a kick out of it. They really appreciated the opportunity for the training, and, I mean, they did a heck of a job. We've added on our floats, prior, end of last summer, we sucked in those two floats before one and two were connected to each other, and, oh, sorry, two and three were connected to each other, and float one kind of just sat out there, and it created a, really moving with, with the boats and stuff. So we pulled it in one day to try to see how that would react with everything, and it really stabilized that entire, all three of those floats. And so we had hinges put on, the same type of hinges that we have on four and five. And so they're bolted to one, two, and three are all connected. Part of the process going down the road is the new anchoring system that we took a look at, and we're going to investigate to where it's all done with these huge bungee cords, and it keeps it in place. So it goes up, there's strain, goes down, there's strain, goes left, there's right, there's always tension on it to where it, you don't get that jerking motion. So we're thinking that that's going to be a pretty good solution to that with the Express being able to turn off their engines and, and hook that up there. Again, it's, it's in the process, it's down the road. I don't see it happening before, till after next summer. Obviously, we're, we're, you know, losing time here. So this is, we took, when we took the float out, we took the ramp out, we shortened the ramp about three feet. And if you notice when you guys, when everybody boards the boat, that flap would go out, and at high tide, that flap would hit the, come close to those cleats. So we shortened that, and, and I just got to give kudos to the, to the harbor crew, Phil, Bros, Joe, and Mr. Saviker. They did a heck of a job. They re, they put in new treads, so slip and fall issue's not going to be an issue. They shortened the ramp, the flap a little bit, so it's not going to be, you're not going to end up running in, being so jammed there, hopefully. So, and this is them putting it, reinstalling with, with the new, new cement and stuff. Here's a float as a back in place on the, against float number two. You can see the hinges, and you can see on number two where you got the rust and stuff going through. So that's obvious, those are our next priorities, and we have a plan set up for that. And this is the completed float in tied to the, again, nicely painted red stripe, our insurance company was one of the things they, they said they wanted to see, was a red stripe saying, "Stay back." So we had them do that. And this is the end project. This is Phil.
Really?
He, have you noticed the ramp? He's kind of proud right there, and rightfully so.
Oh, I see what you're talking about.
Because he's, I mean, those guys did a heck of a job. We shortened that ramp a little bit. It seems that platform's not completely in place yet. Tim's coming in tomorrow to finish doing it. That ramp behind Phil, off to the side, was the ramp that you'll walk down. So once that's there, we will, we have plans on turning that float over to Express. And, you know, I want to obviously thank Judy and Greg Bombard for their patience. I mean, they, they realize that this is something that needs to get done, and, and it just happened that things worked out well because they had a boat up north getting rehabbed. And unfortunately, the flyer was down for a while because they have some mechanicals, so it kind of worked out pretty well, so. But this is, it was a great project. Tonight, I have a thing on the, for a request, a little bit more money, but it was well worth it. And going forward, our plan in November is to take float three out and be able to hopefully use our end float that we have, that we put in for summertime. We might be able to put that in there as a temporary fix. I'm, I'm hoping that we're not going to get the rain that we did. And Al Larson, or Jack Wall, said that he could have the floats back to us in 10 days.
Oh, my gosh.
And he was almost 10 working days, he was just about done. It's just unfortunately the rain, you know, and everything in between, so. Anyway, that's a little project that we're working on, and I just wanted to kind of show you guys what.
The visual is nice. That's a really nice touch. Thank you, JJ.
You got it.
Yes, it's nice to see the before and after, for sure. Any questions in the harbor?
Yeah.
Okay.
Your nice light, nice white lights around your harbor master's office? Bunch of them are burnt out.
The, the mast light?
No, there's lights around the building.
Oh, the... That's his job.
That's his job.
Okay.
That's the Christmas lights.
That's his job, okay.
Around. All right. Any other questions?
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, Jenny has a question probably of, I know Jenny's just coming up behind you.
I just had a couple of things. One would be in terms of the water usage and conservation, are we going to be able to fix that D cell unit out at Casino that washes boats with D cell water? Because that would, I would think, save some.
That unit is, it's pretty old, and yes, it's on the plans to, to get it fixed again and get the filters and stuff up and running. I wish I could tell you a date, but I can't. So with all the other projects, I mean, it's on, it's definitely on the list.
And then my other question was, once the floats are done professionally, towed over, all the metals are replaced, et cetera, can they be maintained in-house? Like I remember, you know, back in the day when floats were out the boatyard and the crew was, in the winter and, you know, wasn't as busy, they could paint and do fiberglassing?
Yes, when we sent the bid out on, to be able to have the work done, we, we sent a, a request to Caleb, and it's just unfortunately, it has to do with economics, and it costs way too much to, to do that there. So we took, we took it to the mainland. But we will always, when we get into a project like that, we will always look to the local community to be able to do it, but we have to keep it also, keep it within budget. I mean, it's, it's a money.
Stay at the mic, you're not, yeah, sorry.
Sorry. I'm saying that we will always ask the local businesses to be able to, I mean, we want to support them, but it comes down to a dollar and cents, and we only have so much money. So it...
So if it's cheaper to take it over there.
But I, but I, I hear what you're saying, but I believe that Jenny is saying us doing, you know, the harbor guys doing it in-house, and I know you built, you built something out there.
Right. We built, our, we got three harbor crew maintenance personnel. So those three guys are, are doing everything.
Yes.
I mean, I don't, maybe come budget time, I'll come and ask for a couple more people.
Yeah.
Might not get it, but it just has to do with a lot. Years ago, we used to go, the harbor patrol officers used to go up in the canyon and do the maintenance, sanding and stuff. We can't do that anymore because of our insurance, because of being a safety employee. So that is, that's not, that will never start again unless something changes there. But, so we, again, we only have so many people.
Okay.
Yeah, it was a matter, matter of scheduling so that you didn't have to have two or three on at night in the winter, for instance.
I cannot, I cannot use harbor patrol officers to do maintenance on floats. I cannot do that.
We might think outside the box sometimes.
Okay.
The other question is, I noticed on the cover of the Islander, there was a beautiful picture of a lot of seagulls out at Casino Mole in flight, and the rocks were clean because of the rain. But I wondered if stringing some monofilament and just closing the mole off, because in the summertime, it smells so badly, so bad anyway, I can't imagine people out there fishing and, you know, even stepping in it. So, and I have enjoyed a mooring close to the casino at times, and it would be impossible to do it with the birds. So either we take, we get our falconer, or, well, except I guess he says it's a nighttime project, that the birds are nesting at night, so the falcons don't work, or the birds are prey. But it'd be nice to send them somewhere, maybe Descanso.
We've, we've looked at that, and we're trying to figure that out. We just cannot wash the jetty off.
Exactly.
That's totally against the law. We're not going to do that, so.
Totally understand that.
It's one of those, people do go out there, there are people that fish out there, and, you know, we, stringing monofilament line might not be the right thing because if it causes a tripping accident, then all of a sudden, we've got an insurance claim too. So it's, you know.
Right, okay.
It's not legal to interfere with their roosting area.
Right.
Well, I know, but that's a building, but that's why there was...
Okay, we all should be walking up to the mic. I appreciate what you're saying, Haley, so if you want to say to the mic, you may, sure may.
Haley Stigler. I mean, Scott, you can look into it, but I, I don't think that you legally can interfere with their roosting area. You know, marine birds are safe. I would love to not have seagulls there either because they poo all over our boats.
Right.
But, you know, you can only do what you can do.
Yeah, yeah. Thank, thank you, Haley.
Well, you can keep seals out of floats, right?
No.
Well...
The Animal Protection Act says that you can't. You know, you have to...
Right. So I, I know, I know. This is a good conversation for another day, but, but I know when we go, you know, when you take the boat into Long Beach, you see those seals on those light...
Buoyies.
On those buoys out there, they're, they're not keeping them off of there either, so I don't know, maybe there are some... Anyway, it's always, it's a good discussion, and we can continue to have it.
Moving on, Matt Baker, Finance Department. We're working on the 18 audit. We're expecting auditors on the island next week, and that is the focus of our department right now. Unless there's any questions, that's on my update.
I think we're good. Nope. See, nobody has any questions for finance. Gosh, okay. Oh, we have at least one more department head.
Dan.
Dan?
I just want to make sure I wasn't in the crossfires of that last discussion. Community Service Department, just a couple of updates. We're a couple of weeks into our basketball season, it's going well. Have 135 youth, both girls and boys in that program, tumbling, dancing, ninja. We finished up our session 10 last weekend, we got a weekend off. We're taking reservations this week to start the following weekend for session 11. A couple of dates coming up, Spring Festival Thursday, April 18th, from 5:00 to 9:00 on Front Street. And then our, followed by our Community Egg Day Saturday, the 20th, at Descanso Beach. Really appreciate the island company again for letting us co-host out there at the beach club. And then lastly, we had our first outrigger meeting for the season. We had 36 in attendance last week here in Chambers with 11 new potential paddlers, so really encouraged about where that program's going.
That's wonderful.
And then I think Jim said he was going to speak on Catalina Cares and maybe the, the project that we're working together on, so he can touch on that.
Great.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry.
Those lights around the harbor master's office?
Note, note taken.
Also, the lights around the Plaza, Wrigley Plaza. A couple of them burnt out, they replaced them with regular bulbs, they're not the low voltage bulbs.
Where's, where's the second spot?
Uh, Wrigley Plaza.
Wrigley Plaza, okay.
Yeah, you can look at them, they're just all these nice subtle lights and then a big bright and then a nice subtle one.
That's what they have. We had a lift, that's all they had at the time at the, the local, but we'll get those taken care of, I know what you're talking about. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
I just have something to say for Amanda Cook. She was unable to be here this evening and that she did receive a shopping cart containment plan from Vons. It will be at the perimeter of the parking lot, and I'm not, I do not have a date though of when it's going to be finished.
Didn't we have a date for them?
They have to come back to the council.
They had to come back.
It was a 45-day thing.
We gave them 40 days or 45 days, right? We have a date for them?
Do they have to come back?
We had a deadline for them.
Yeah, I thought the, the, they had to come back to the council with the plan within 45 days. I think that's what the action was.
No, it wasn't, excuse me. It was not to come back to council, it was to submit it, and Planning Department did receive it, and, because we looked at the actions to make sure. We, we looked at the tape.
Okay, um, City Manager report.
I just want to remind the public that we are still undergoing vehicle permitting, and that is until April 1st, so please come to City Hall from 9:00 to 12:00 and 2:00 to 4:00.
And City Attorney?
I lost my voice for a week and a half. I'm on the recovery. Was the best week and a half of my office's life because I couldn't talk. So I'll try and keep it down tonight and tomorrow.
Okay, fantastic. Okay, and City Council report.
I'm having nothing. I'm good. I'm good.
Okay, I, just a couple of things. The Knights of Columbus will be having a community blood drive on June 11th from 8:00 to 5:00. They're in the process of doing some planning and organization, I'm going to be meeting with them Thursday, but anyway, so that's June 11th, so you have plenty of time to eat your iron and get healthy before you donate your blood. And then, this was in the log?
Yeah.
Yes. So two Southern California harbors nominated for Best Harbor of 2019, and that is the harbor in Avalon and in San Diego Bay. So, and that is through USHarbors.com, so let's hear it for our harbor. Oral Communications, this is an opportunity for people in the community to speak on items not on the agenda. You will be limited to three minutes, and no action will be taken.
Hello, Paul Burchall, Avalon Library. If you visit our construction site, we have a banner that actually shows a sort of visual reenactment of what the new space is going to look like. It looks pretty sleek, it's going to be kind of sleek and different spatially, not bigger, but they're going to move all the bookcases around, and it's going to look a lot larger in size. It's going to be really kind of cool. Coming up at our library, we are continuing with our ukulele class, thanks to the friends of our library. That's meeting every Thursday, it's going incredibly well. We popped by the bank the other day and heard them chatting about. It's very cool, I wish it could go on forever. We have ukuleles everywhere. Coming up on Friday, we're starting the Parent-Child Workshop, 11 o'clock Fridays, we'll clear the library, clear space, put a lot of toys out, but they've, they mailed me toys, oh my goodness. And it's basically for toddlers, zero to three, and their parents and caregivers. We're also going to have a couple of resource specialists wandering around, informally offering advice, answering questions, not lecturing or, you know, force-feeding you knowledge, but what you want, you can ask. Coming up during Cesar Chavez Week, we're going to have an Oceanic Art Project. It's actually a charitable event where you create a picture of a fish, or some, a picture of something underwater, we donate it to the Bezos Corporation, or Bezos Foundation, they're going to donate it to environmental charity. For each piece that's sent in, a donation is made from the Bezos Foundation. Coming up first week in April, we're going to have an origami class taught by Emmy Lam. We're going to have a Science Magic of Chemistry event at the end of April coming up. I spoke with Chuck Liddell a couple of weeks back. He was very keen to host an Avalon History Series, which would be on a Tuesday, early afternoon, once a month. I hear he is unwell, I'll let you know how this happens as we get along. I'm very keen to have that at the library, if I can at all arrange it. Our friends at the library helped us purchase a mail subscription to the LA Times. It hasn't arrived yet. I'm very curious to see if it's going to be one day late, or a month late, or 1985. We'll see. I also however want to tell you, the county has just purchased an online license so that you can read the New York Times in its entirety, online. Just go to the website, lacountylibrary.org, go to newspapers, enter your library card number, they have the entire New York Times, which is very hard to find. We're still doing Story Times on Saturday morning, Your Library on your device some Friday afternoons, knitting Saturday afternoons, and lots of art Thursday. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Paul.
Your library at your service.
You're very active, you're very delightful.
Good evening, that was a great segue, I'm really happy that Paul went right in front of me, because I wanted to invite members of the community, and the council, and city staff, to join us in being readers and proofreaders of our newly relaunched website. We have recently navigated our website from one platform to another, and whenever you do that, lots of odd little things happen, and so we are prolifically reading it, but we invite input from anyone who wants to click and look around and whatever, and you can send any comments or anything you find to info@catalinachamber.com. And one of the brand-new tools that came along with that migration is that local events, so again, thank you, Paul, for the setup, local events can now be put on our event calendar by members of the community or members of the Chamber of Commerce. So on the Event tab on the website, when you click on it, it will pop up a little balloon, and under that balloon, there's Submit Your Event. Very straightforward, if you've used any online Microsoft forms, it will look very familiar and very intuitive, and so we welcome that. It will have to go through an authorization process before it goes live, and that way we can make sure we don't end up with lots of non-event, event stuff there.
Okay.
And, and then speaking of events, I have been working with city staff, namely Dan and some others, to bring the first in what we hope will be one of many years of Community Cleanup Day, under the auspices of the organizational header that I mentioned earlier, Care for Catalina. We are tentatively calling this activity Catalina Cares, this is the community caring for our, our community in this annual cleanup day, and we're working with Avalon Freight Services, our local landfill management company, and a variety of civic organizations, and anyone who's interested in joining in the planning of that event, and then hopefully the event itself, can attend a meeting tomorrow at 3:00 PM in the Founder's Room at US Bank.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Council, I just wanted to remind you and everybody at home, if you haven't heard, that anybody that has ridden the Express Boat in the morning, and has seen our stewardess, Marie Lyman, she lost her battle with cancer, and they're having a celebration of life at the M Restaurant on the 31st, and I believe it's between 2:00 and 5:00, but you might want to call the Express to find out the exact times. But I would, I'd encourage anybody that has ridden those boats in the morning, and her smile and her, her cantankerous, well, maybe just to me, but it, it was, it was tragic to hear that, she fought it long and hard, but March 31st, between 2:00 and 5:00, Celebration of Life, and everybody, please come down and, and tell Ray and the Express people, you know, how much she meant to you. So, you know, right, thank you.
Thank you. It's also in the paper, last, last week's paper, so. Okay, if, there are no more? Okay.
Mayor, City Council, and staff, Mike Sheehan from Catalina Transparent, and I really don't take great pleasure, you know, discussing some of this business, but it needs to be discussed. The managers of the California Public Employees Retirement System, CALPERS, is paying attention, close attention to the various pension spiking schemes created by city managers. These schemes, especially just before retirement, are creating millions in unfunded debt obligations that are being unjustly put on the backs of our children and grandchildren. In California, many times, county, city council members have given in to these pension spiking schemes by powerful city managers, they are very powerful people, as we well know. Do council members have something personal to gain by unrealistically appeasing city managers? Recently, through the Freedom of Information Act, the City of Avalon Accounting Department, Mr. Baker, provided figures that annualized Ms. Ratty's total pay and benefits at over $300,000, and with deferred compensation included, around $325,000. It appears that this is now the largest pay and benefits package in Avalon his, city history. I haven't found anybody that's corrected that, that I brought this up with. This accomplished, this, this was accomplished by adding the city manager job to the city clerk job to one person. California state retirement law requires that our city clerk makes publicly available the salary schedules for public employees, so that the public knows that what they're being paid. This does not have to be done, as I did, by FOIA, Freedom of Information Act. I did it anyhow. Why has our city clerk, city manager chosen to specifically violate a certain law? The California state retirement law requires that our city clerk makes publicly available salary schedules for public employees, period. Hasn't been done. And the irony of holding both jobs where one is supposed to report, and the, on the other one's salary, is a serious conflict of interest. CALPERS has expanded its efforts to identify and root out pension spiking. We might be prepared for an audit. And I'll make this very quick. An Avalon resident recently made a comment to me, because we're not living in a vacuum here. He made this comment to me, this unfunded pension spiking in Avalon, about this unfunded pension spike, and his comment was based on the March 1st, 2019, letter to the editor by Judy Greer in the Islander. Ms. Greer praised Ms. Ratty for the two job titles she holds and does a good job. She is doing what she's doing for the city, I'm sorry, she, in that she is doing a good job for the city. In the article, Ms. Greer noted that she was recently discussing the building lease with Ms. Ratty for Catalina Kid Ventures. The Avalon resident noted that the irony is that the kids will be paying for this. So, it's serious matter, and the fact that Ms. Greer in the paper put that it was a personal attack is really poor, poor manners. It's not, it's a serious business, and it happens in other cities, it's not just here. Thank you.
Okay.
Paula Patterson, 221 Whitley. I, I had a question, it was brought to my attention that, that the, at the Environmental Services, they're no longer sorting trash, I don't know if that's true or not, or if anybody knows about that? And if so, does that mean they're not recycling, and it's all going into the landfill, or does anybody know about that?
That statement is not correct, Paula. Has there been more going into the landfill recently? Yes. Mr. Jay Fowler will be at the city council meeting at the next meeting to discuss his plans for increasing our diversion, and he has been assessing not just the residential, but a lot of time has been spent on the commercial side also. A lot of people are unaware that when they think that they're recycling, if they're throwing some paper products in there also, and they tear open those bags, and if things are contaminated, as they call it, then unfortunately, it gets tossed to the side and goes...
I couldn't imagine that, and it wouldn't have come to the attention of everybody, so I wanted to just verify that that's not the case, so...
We are going to be undergoing a very big campaign to enlighten residents, and we've been working with the commercial businesses also.
Great, thank you.
And Care Catalina can help with that as well.
Great.
Yes. And, because they take the glass and the plastic over, and they sell that, so it's not to their benefit to have everything go in the landfill, correct?
I keep hearing that that's, that's winding down a little, but I, I just want to, you know, it's good to hear that that's not, you know, that we're still doing it, and we're making even more stringent efforts to keep the landfill under control. Thank you.
Uh-huh.
Janie Hall, 334 Clarissa. I was, just like, felt like a celebration was in order to see the new trash cans. They were, I mean, we should have all come out for that. But what now bothers me to see is our planter boxes. Just from driving to the hills, where it's green, and there's flowers, and then to hit the bottom of the Marilla or Whitley, and it's just dead. And I'm just wondering, we have gardeners, or part-time gardeners, or... And then the other thing is, I understand there's a saltwater issue with having plants that are saltwater resistant and deer resistant, but there is also a conservancy that specializes in those kinds of plants, and that could probably be of assistance in directing us, and you could even just look at the casino landscaping, which just looks incredible, and then it, there's a real mismatch when you look at ours. So maybe we could start working on planters.
So, one of the items I was going to discuss next meeting, our focus with public worst right now, all the way through mid-May, is to get up and do that safe and clean, just like the Care Catalina is trying to do, Catalina Care. We're up there trying to get the landscaping, the serpentine wall, the tile on the benches, the trip and fall hazards, taking care of all those things. We did have a significant hit with the saltwater from the storms this year, and not all of our landscaping, it's going to take time to replace that with the right type of landscaping, but we are getting out there and putting appropriate landscaping. We have finished our irrigation system, and it's all in working order now, so you'll see the new plantings go in, and things looking a lot better by mid-May. So that is already on our schedule.
Thank you. Any others? Okay, we will move on to the consent.
There are five items this evening on the consent calendar, the first one is minutes from February 19, 2019, and March 5th of 2019. We did approve February 19 at the last meeting, but we forgot to have Richard abstain from that, since he wasn't at that meeting, so we're just noting it for the record now, and it just will be you and Ollie.
Oh, okay.
That was in here.
You don't, and then there's a warrants for dispersment from the periods of February 9th through March 8th, for a total dispersment of $2,431,781.41. Item three is to award the in-flight RFP to Catalina Island Coastal Tours and Fishing. Number four is to authorize the city manager to approve an increased expenditure of $5,331.21 for the in-flight repairs. And number five is to adopt the resolution declaring the items listed on the resolution, which are our trash cans as surplus property, and authorize the city manager to dispose of those items properly.
Council, what's your pleasure?
Let's pick three off.
Number three, item number three, okay. And would you like to make motion on the others?
Move staff on 1, 2, 4, and 5.
Okay. Ms. R. Second?
I'll second that.
Call for the vote.
Three is, two absent, Councilmembers Albers and Cassidy.
I think we all got a letter today from, or a copy of a letter, talking about item three.
If it was in my basket, if it was in my basket later, I didn't get it, so I apologize. That's what Denise was referring to?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's from Doug Shelton of Island Water Charters in Paris.
Oh, the small one, okay.
I think he says the in-flight RFP awarded, the in-flight RFP awarded, you are about to consider this, which not, should not be awarded, the proposal does not reflect the terms of the RFP. If the city is willing to consider and accept my offer of the RFP, it would have stated that. It was specific in the terms, the city should issue a new RFP. And in reviewing the application, or reviewing the responsive RFP, there are some differences. And I think one of the big things is waiving rent for the first seven years.
So I just want, noted, Councilmember Olson, on page six of the RFP that went out, there's a few sections on that one page. The very bottom, it says, "This RFP is available on the city's website. The city reserves the right to waive any and all requirements for this proposal process and/or accept or reject any or all proposals. The city reserves the right to make and award based solely on the proposals received, or to negotiate further with one or more respondents. The respondent selected for the award will be chosen not solely on price, but also on the basis of best value and/or greatest benefit to the city." And then also, it'd be like the third paragraph from the top on page six, "The city will award the contract on the basis of the most responsive qualified and responsible bidder who provides the best value to the city. The city reserves the right to negotiate the final contract price and terms." And then I just, I'm not arguing with you, Councilmember Olson, I'm just pointing out, and then on December 13th, the ad asking for a request for proposals was sent to all our waterside permits, as well as it was published, and then on our website, and it also states on... And it also states on that, it's a little small here, hang on. I can't find it now, Ollie.
But I also, I just believe...
I just wanted noted that it was in there, that any, but you could put any kind of offer in.
No, I think the concern was, is I don't think that someone's expecting to waive rent for seven years.
Okay. But he didn't even come to the walkthrough, the mandatory meeting, correct?
The person that...
Well, the celebrity didn't even come to the mandatory walkthrough meeting.
But that's because you read the RFP and it had rent in it.
Well, couldn't you have come and asked some questions?
The RFP had wet Ollie?
I believe there was a section that the, the rent was going to be for the 80-foot mooring fees. Ah, where's it? I forget for doing the computer, not marking it up. The respondents will pay a nightly mooring fee for the end float based upon the float's total length in accordance with the city's current mooring fee schedule. And from the RFP.
Yes.
And the proposal is waiving that for seven years.
Yes, which was a total of $22,000.
Twenty-two thousand change. But if the RFP didn't say you'll pay this, or no negotiable amount, we might have had more respondents. I don't know if the people that took out the, saw the RFP, knew that we're going to let's make a deal or not.
I respect your opinion, Councilmembers.
Thank you. I respect yours, too.
And however, the words that she read was also in the RFP. The words that she read about the negotiating and all of that. So to at least come to the meeting to ask questions, it seems like would be advisable, you would think. But anyway, okay.
I think it's very specific where it says, "You will pay this rent." There wasn't any line for negotiating there. And that, I mean, it would have been better to say, you know, rent can be negotiated.
On that one particular line.
The council also has the ability to say no to certain terms, and we could go back and see if that is a deal breaker with the applicant.
Well, we should ask the applicant. Okay, the applicant is here. Hi, Scott.
Hi, Scott. Hi. Scott Gorozanco, Catalina Coastal Tours and Fishing. We definitely, we bid the project for the RFP. What questions may I answer for you?
Waiving the rent for the first seven years.
Okay. It's a fair question. In doing the RFP, to be able to financially figure the cost of the rent, as well as the cost of just purchasing a float, you know, you're looking at $200, $250,000 out of our budget to build a float, as well as, you know, just the grounding gear. So there's a lot of expense that's involved in that, in something that has the ability for the city to cancel within a 60-day notice. So I feel in fairness with the project, because the overall objective of the project is about congestion relief. So it's not about really, you know, if I get it or if someone else gets it. It's who's going to impact the harbor the most with the impact of congestion relief. And with the numbers that I provided for you, I think you can see that out of anybody in this harbor, we can relieve the congestion. We run seven boats in the harbor, over 80,000 riders on the shoreboat alone, and as well as our fishing and charter business with excess of 40,000 riders. So I think that we can partner with the city, and that was what I wrote in my original transmittal note, is this is a partnership. You know, it's a problem that I see that the city has in the harbor. It's a problem with congestion. It's not my responsibility to solve that problem, but if we partner together, I think we can solve it. And we're the best candidate to do that.
And one of the items on the, that the staff is not recommending to approve was that item six, the city exercises a 60-day termination in the first five years. A cancellation fee of $30,000 will be paid to y'all, and the staff is not agreeing to that.
Correct. The only response I would have to that is, the reasoning for putting that into the bid was the fact of, at any time, if one day somebody wakes up and just says, "Well, let's go ahead and send it over to another person," that I've got, you know, quarter of a million dollars invested into something that I could lose in 60 days. So I would be interested to see if there was a response in an amount that would seem fair. So definitely something within the negotiation, just so that it basically secures the fact that it's just not going to be something that just gets canceled. You know, today we're friends, but it may not be that way in the future.
Have you ever noticed how long it takes us to terminate something?
Yes, exactly.
I'm sorry.
But I would suggest, if there's an amount that the city would feel comfortable, even if it was a change in the term of, like, in a two-year period, just so that I could ensure that I can recoup my cost of at least some of the expenditure being put out to solve this problem of congestion.
And when do you think, if this was awarded today, when do you think the float would be in?
So I put for May of next year. It's going to take us the better half of the year to finalize some things. We've talked to some builders, we're waiting on some bids for the final picture. And plus, there'd be some plans that would need to be approved by the city.
Okay. So the contract isn't really signed until, you gotta write, so the clock, the clock would start now?
Correct.
And that would include, this termination period would start when the contract was signed?
Cool.
So if it took a year to do it, already a year, if we do two years, already a year's gone by?
Right. Absolutely.
And I just had a question on the thing, it says, "They currently hold a semi-exclusive shoreboat franchise." What does that mean? Semi-exclusive?
That means generating in and out of the city for shoreboats.
That means what, I'm sorry?
They have the trips in, start, it starts in one point of the harbor and goes to another point of the harbor. That they have an exclusive franchise for that. But if you consider shoreboat outside of the...
Like for the cruise ship.
I think it's outside, like, for the cruise ships or for people that maybe have charter trips where they pick people up and they go outside of the city.
That's why you used that term. Okay, okay, thank you, okay. We want questions from the audience before we talk about this? Or comments?
First off, I feel like we've gone back in time, about 30 to 35 years, when we didn't have a float, and then a harbor congestion study was done, and my dad stood at this podium, and Bud Smith said that it'd be a win-win situation to have a float here. Of course, my comments have gone several different ways in my head before I walked up tonight, but this is what I've decided to do. So if you guys will bear with me, I have printed out the agenda item for this. And so first off, I highlighted to waive any irregularities and award, just like you guys already stated, the RFP states that everyone, or this contract was to pay nightly mooring fees for a float, which is 80 feet or whatever the length of the float was. So a nightly mooring fee, which currently is $115 a night. And then, let's say, we put Scott's boats on there. So that'd be four boats, 30-ish feet, right? We'll just do a minimum. So that's the minimum, 30 feet. So that's $38 a night. So between May 1st and October 15th, it's 168 nights. The cost for the float for the summer would be $19,320. His lease fee is $3,200 per summer, right? So then, the 168 nights by $38 for a 30-foot mooring, or 30-foot and less, comes out to $6,384, multiply that by four boats, so that's $25,536. So combining the float and the boats, we're looking at a minimum of $44,856 per summer is what you were originally asking any and all operators to bid on this RFP to pay per summer. I don't want to rehash too much of the past, because that's gotten me nowhere with you guys. So if we were to go moving forward, because I know Rich loves to look at numbers, so I'm giving him all the numbers tonight. So for seven years, that would total $313,992 for seven years. That's the total for the boats and the floats. So if you were to go nightly, you wouldn't be losing out on your number of $22,834 just for seven years. That's just at a lease rate for what is right now at a lease rate. You'd actually be losing out, the city would be losing out on $291,158 for the next seven years. Okay? The next thing going down is, does that three-minute go for this? No. Okay. So the authorization was granted on the December 4 meeting, the council meeting. I've watched that meeting twice, and I attended it, and nobody voted to approve this RFP on that evening. In fact, Annie's words were, "Okay, moving right along." And you moved on to the next topic. Nobody voted. So then, I'm not sure who put this in, but the RFP was issued to the public on December 11th. This agenda item says that it was December 5. That was originally what the date was supposed to be, if you guys would have approved it on December 4. But we didn't get anything until December 11th. The RFP then closed on January 25th, not January 18th, as it states in this agenda item. I kind of already covered it, but the main criteria for the evaluation, right, to get all this RFP, and we'll just sum it up here, was to alleviate congestion in the harbor. Well, you had that float. You voted a couple of years ago. I'm just, if I was in your seat right now, these are the things I'd be looking at, the things I'd be asking, because, you know, the best defense is a good offense, right? So you had a float in, you voted on the float to be there with a lease mooring rate for an 80-foot float, a lease mooring rate for a 50-foot boat, which is the Seaview, and a lease mooring rate for a 60-foot and over, which is the Nautilus. And you also voted for two lease mooring rates for the two 30-foot shoreboats. So for just the six-month period, because we took those lease mooring rates and then divided them in half, because the float would only be in for half of the year, it's $5,770. Just for 2017, 2018, and 2019, you guys would have collected from Island Enterprises $17,310. Over the next seven years, which Scott is asking for free, you would be collecting $40,390 from Island Enterprises. So it's a minimum that you guys are losing out on $57,700, and that's based on the 2017 lease mooring rates. You decided to rescind that vote, because someone of city staff brought the numbers to the attention of three council members, and a council member decided to rescind the vote and bring it back onto the agenda, because it was brought to his attention that there was a lot of money on the table and that you should go after it. And you tried, and it was unsuccessful. And now you have someone that is offering you the same deal minus seven years. It's not looking so good, guys. The 20-year term, absolutely understand, because he'd have to be building the float. However, you guys rejected that when the Armstrongs offered that for the Casino Dock RFP, because you thought someone else would be willing to pay more for that prime location, just like the prime location of the end float. I've already discussed the no charge for seven years. I've given you the numbers for the $22,000 already. Let's go to the lease fees. It's been recently brought to my attention that you have another float in this harbor that boats are being tied to. The boats that are being tied to this float hold lease mooring rates.
Am I supposed to be limiting this to three minutes?
And the city, I'm almost done after this, I promise. I'm on my last page. So it was recently brought to my attention, though. I'm just trying to educate you guys, because I often get council members coming to me afterwards, or coming to my dad, or coming to us in general, that you guys don't know enough information that you wish you could tap into our brains. So I'm giving you that opportunity right now, okay? And I know this is taking a long time. We all know that anytime something comes up the Island Enterprises of the float, it's going to be long-winded. I apologize. You know what's coming. So the nightly, it was recently brought to my attention, there's a float in the harbor, there are boats getting tied to it. All of these boats have lease mooring rates. The city recently charged them per night, every night that they were tied to that float. If you are going to put in a new float, and you are going to allow someone to come in and only pay a lease mooring rate when you are charging someone else nightly, you are discriminating and doing discriminating rates, which as JJ brought up in a recent council meeting, that that is against the State Lands Commission. You are not allowed to discriminate one person against the other. So this is where I close. It is my strong recommendation that you think about this a lot, and you vote no tonight. Because if you vote yes and pass this and waive any and all irregularities, you are being unfair, you are not being equal to other operators in the harbor, and you are discriminating against each operator.
Thank you for your complete comments. And if you want to leave your notes with us, you're more than welcome to...
No problem. Thanks.
Okay. Because that's a lot of information.
It is a lot of information. And I think I deserve a right to respond to that, because I think there needs to be, you know, if so much time was spent actually doing their own RFP, maybe we could look at that and compare it instead of just looking at ours. So I would just like to say that, first of all, one comment made about the rates of our boats being on the side of the float. We actually already have three leased moorings. There's nothing in my bid that states that I'm looking to get that for free. I'm still paying our standard lease moorings. So all those numbers that we just heard are not correct. So in addition, we actually, in the RFP, it talks about doing the lease, long-term lease rate for the 80-foot mooring. So that's why there's a difference as opposed to the nightly. That was what my proposal was. Comes up to about $3,200 a year for that particular mooring space. But we also are going to need to put probably an additional $25,000 to $30,000 in grounding gear. Not to mention if we have to remove other people's grounding gear that was abandoned in that spot. So I would just say that, you know, if you have specific questions regarding what I put together on that, feel free to ask me. And the numbers are true and concise.
Thank you, Scott. The thing that I find interesting, because we don't get numbers here, so we don't, we don't know any of this, really. I mean, there's no numbers here to tell us what we are and are not getting and that kind of thing. And I don't know if, I don't know if, for example, if I were to say, "Well, heck, yeah, we just got, you know, we just lost out on $350,000, and the thing only costs $250, and it's a free for seven years." Well, does that make sense? Maybe not. But I don't think we have those, we don't have that kind of information to know anything. Do we?
Well, I don't know all the numbers that Haley was referring to. I'd love to get her notes, so I could respond back to some of that. But we are in litigation, so there's a lot of things that we cannot respond to.
Oh, I understand, but I think numbers...
I'm not sure what numbers, Mayor Marshall, that else we could provide to you, other than we told you what we would be losing out on the $22,000. Trying to think where it is now.
I promise I'll be much faster. I have nothing against you, Scott. I don't. I don't. I just want you to be fair.
Right.
Right? Because that's been kind of the theme for the last five years, right? That we're trying to just be fair to all operators. You're fine. You put in a bid, you took the time. The city, I was also told, contacted one of the other, other operators to ask him to join the mandatory meeting. He didn't want to go. I didn't get a phone call, because I was driving the Nautilus. But it's interesting that city staff is reaching out to other operators to bid on this RFP. It just is very apparent that you don't want Island Enterprises. We're not even saying that we're very interested. I'm, I'm just trying to, if you guys want to be fair, if you want to not discriminate, I'm, I'm giving you facts. I'm happy to just give you the numbers, completely unbiased, completely, if it was just someone in the community of Avalon that loved numbers, I'm happy to hand those to you. I'm happy to email them to you tonight, that's all. I'm not...
Haley, did you receive an ad via the email?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Just want to make sure you got it.
No, no, I did, I did. And I uh, I also asked if I'd be able to make it up, because I had to drive the boat that day, because our operator was sick, and I was told by Scott Campbell that that was a no, because it was mandatory. And that's fine, but it's just interesting that city staff, on the day of that meeting, contacted other operators to join.
I will have to check into that, Haley.
So I'm just throwing that out there, but I just, I would just say, put it out to bid again. If you want to change the terms, or you want to make them more flexible, great, but give everyone an opportunity to bid on this, because the original RFP that you put out makes no financial sense. Why would anyone want to spend close to fifty thousand dollars a year to help the city when you're already helping only one other operator in the harbor?
All right. Thank you. That was a rhetorical question.
Just one other comment. If, if it does go back out to bid, it, it does seem a little unfair that a proposal with our terms and specific, basically, I play cards, I don't show my hand. So now this is out in public, so it's not the same, you know, to do a fair bid, this is not the way that it's supposed to be done.
Right, okay.
Makes sense. I think some interesting points have been raised, and I think I'd like to give staff time to respond to some of those points, and hold it over to the next meeting.
Okay.
That was just me speaking.
What would you like me to report back? What am I following up on exactly?
Okay. Correct me if I'm wrong, because I didn't read all the fine print. Do we really know what, what we would make off of this? Off of his proposal? What, what amount of money comes to the city every year from this?
So, um, Mayor, I, my interpretation of it is to ease the congestion in the harbor. It is not for, it is not a moneymaker for us. It is, the three shoreboats that he would be tying on there would be paying their leased moorings. So when they're on during that six-month time period, the moorings that he would normally be holding, we would be gen, raising jev, um, revenue on it. But this isn't, this is just to ease the congestion. We do get their harbor use fees, which is seven percent, um, and...
Sales manager.
Yes.
Right.
JJ, you have anything to add? Where are you?
Well, all I was gonna say was, if you're feeling bad, and Scott, again, it's nothing against you personally, I just, I want to be fair, right? And, you know, people, I love, I love this town. Don't take it personal. Okay. So don't take it personal. But historically speaking, you have rejected several RFPs by only one bidder, because you didn't like the terms. You did it with the shoreboat RFP, and you've done it with Casino Dock several times. All I'm asking is, think about it. Don't make a fly-by-the-seat-of-your-pants decision because it makes you feel good. Really crunch the numbers. The city is not doing well financially. We've all had a really hard winter. It's been a real winter, right? Crunch the numbers, make an educated decision, please.
JJ.
Oh, I'm sorry, JJ. It's, it's all right. Um, again, we came to you with an RFP, you gave us permission to put it out. We put it out, gave it plenty of time for um people to respond. There was a mandatory job walk in the RFP, it stated that, and said, "You want to take your RFP, come out, do the job walk." It, there was no secrets, there was no smoke and mirrors, there's no different figures. Everybody had the same opportunity to be able to do it. Only two people um came out. Scott and Catalina and uh, uh Catalina um Cruises came out. And granted, I got a call from Catalina Cruises saying, "What's it all about?" I said, "If you want, it doesn't cost anything to come do it. If you want to come do it, come do it. I don't know why you would want to, but come, come out and, and check it out." But it's meant, for you to go the next step, it's a mandatory job walk. It's mandatory. So those who didn't go through the steps, that's crying, you know, wolf after the doors closed. You have, everybody got the same information. So, you know, as for the terms, I believe those, you know, again, are still, you know, are still nego, negotiable. But I, I'm just saying, for those who took advantage of the RFP and took it out, um, they did it right. They did it right. So my opinion is, why are we penalizing him? Because he did it right.
Right.
That, that, you know, so um it, it will take the shoreboats off the main pier, puts them on the end float. It, just like when the Island Enterprise had it, it took their, their um glass-bottomed boats and semi-submersible off the floats into the end float. It relaxed the, um, the congestion on the pier. So um again, I think we did everything right. I don't think there's any, you know, smoke and mirrors here, and I think that um it, you know, it's gonna be your, your decision what you want to do or how you want to do it.
Okay, so, okay, so item number six on that thing about the thirty thousand dollars, that is still...
Item number six was, the reason why we didn't approve that is that it, just for the, the same reason that if all of a sudden, they decide that they don't want to, they don't want to run a shoreboat in the wintertime, because it's not profitable, and they pull out of it. Well, if they pull out of it, according to this, we gotta pay them thirty thousand dollars. No. I, I'm sorry, there's gotta be better wording in that, that protects the city. Can't just be, because we...
Well, he's saying, it says if the city exercises the termination.
I know, but there's gotta be just cause for that. There's got, it's not, I mean, there's got, if he just up and quits running, and, or whomever, up and quits running, i- am I not looking at this correctly?
No, you're, no. If he, if he quits, we don't pay him thirty thousand dollars, if only we tell him to get out. Then, if the city exercises the term, if we, if we push him out, then, but if he leaves, no.
But again, as long as that is specified correctly, then we, that wasn't a, you know, a, a deal breaker. I'm just saying, I looked at it from the standpoint of the city was in a loophole there, and I didn't want that to happen, so...
Okay, so that needs to be discussed a little bit, and then there's, there was one other issue to be discussed. What am I thinking? That, that maybe you sit down and talk with Scott about, what was it?
On, no, on number one, I was just pointing out, the twenty years, which was gonna supposed to be um the first ten years, and then two fives, and they were asking for straight twenty year. I am inclined to just do the ten-year with the two fives.
Oh, right, okay, and I guess I'm talking, I guess maybe I'm thinking about the seven years. If that, if there's any negotiation on the seven years no charge. But I don't know that that's something we should discuss here, something that should go back to y'all, maybe?
I, I think there's just two questions. There's the, the fee charged and how much is waived, is waived. And if you, if you go with the thirty thousand dollars a year, in year seven, that's all it is.
Help me out here.
Um, he's suggesting that they have a lease rate, an eighty-foot lease rate for the six months that's there, as opposed to the nightly, as the RFP called for.
Oh.
Nightly is big bucks.
Oh, that's hundred...
Maybe there's happy ground somewhere in the middle.
See, that's where the numbers are, I think, are important.
I, I think you're...
Whether Haley's are good numbers or bad numbers, I don't know, but we know what the numbers are, so to do the math, I think, is, is important for somebody to do the math. I mean, because, and when Scott says this is what he needs, um, or this is what he would like, did we actually do some kind of a cost analysis, or did we just say, "Well, it's all about congestion, so we don't care about the money"?
Absolutely not, Mayor.
Okay.
No, not even close.
So, so, so were those, I guess...
That discussion, that, that discussion, um, we, we had that discussion regarding, regarding the proposal, so it just, we can go back and, and um, uh, if you want us to prove it, go back and renegotiate the, the um, the terms and the money. However, you know, I don't know, um, again, I'm not really familiar with the process here, so I'm at a disadvantage.
I mean, I don't feel the need to go out for another RFP, not at all.
Yeah.
Uh, but I, but if there's, if there's any wiggle room, perhaps.
Well, and again, the seven years is that, you know, like stated on both sides, it's very expensive to build a float. And our, you know, our job is, is to make him succeed, his job that makes us succeed. We all succeed, we're partners at this, and that's a heavy amount of money to put out um on the, on a, on a project like this. So there's gotta be some give and take. I, I didn't feel that that was unreasonable to uh, to provide. And, and on the eighth year, whatever that lease rate is for that eighty-foot um, uh float, that's what it'll be. It'll start off at, you know, so um, again, if we didn't feel comfortable in these terms, we wouldn't have brought it forward.
I, I understand. I definitely...
So it's just, although...
So are you asking for us to come back then with some numbers?
Yeah, and, and maybe just, I mean, it would be nice to have a full council on something like that. This is a big deal.
You got it. Beyond the next agenda.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
So, but we're not changing, okay.
Okay, so we're just gonna hold this over and come back. Thank you. Okay, and development impact fees, here we come.
Okay, as we said before, that we were gonna be back in March discussing development impact fees, okay?
Oh, where's that?
So we're almost at the end of this. Um, so a little bit background for the public that's listening. Um, development impact fees are a one-time charge on new development to fund new public capital facilities, and that's important. It's capital facilities, it's not for maintenance. Cities can charge impact fees to fund capital improvements of various city infrastructure that is impacted by new developments such as transportation, parks, and recreation, schools, and/or fire facilities. Those are some examples. A draft development impact fee report outlining the fees was presented to city council already, and it, we had some public comment on that first round. Um, the report has been published, is published on the city's website at www.cityofavalon.com/dif. So anybody in the public can go there and see what we've done to date and the different iterations. Staff solicited and has received input from local shareholders, including developers, contractors, and businesses, as well as uh the city staff from all the different departments that would be affected by these fees. Um, the premise on which the impact fees are based is that development should pay its fair share of the providing facilities necessary to accommodate growth. The purpose of the report is to ensure the valuation of the fee is based on the expected cost of the new development to the city, infrastructure, and to determine which projects, and that's important to have things included, um, are appropriate in calculating those costs. And we can add projects as we go along, as we update the, so if there's something you don't see there, as we do updates to it, that would change the fees, but that would add the projects that um we could have on, that we could build. Um, so many of the comments that we received from the stakeholders were centered on the process to implement the fees, and how fairly they were assessed and the nature of the projects in the report. And we um made a, compiled all those, and we have provided to council a compilation of all those comments, so that it's more succinct to understand, because they were kind of all over the place. That was the last thing that I had presented, just in a verbal report to you, about the status of this. The intent of tonight's effort is to allow city council to give input direction prior to the diff going to the public hearing. The public hearing is scheduled for the next council meeting on April the second. Um, and so hopefully what our intent would be is that we would adopt at that public hearing. Um, this depends on how we're ready to proceed, but so what the recommended action is tonight is to discuss the report and comments received from the public, and then provide direction to staff on what should be included or modified in the report version to be presented in the public hearing, if there is any changes from what we see here. The latest version that you have in front of you is what we had some modification, slight modifications, as we had that compilation of comments. Uh, the consultant made those corrections, and you have that fresh report in front of you. And that you also have that compilation of all the reviews, that's a ten-page document, and for anybody in the public that needs a copy of that, it's here, there's written right on the table over there, it's available to you. So um I guess to proceed forward, if there was anything that had jumped out from all those, those two documents that you wanted to focus on, um, we could work on those.
Not having read this, this second one, because there are questions, and, and I don't know if, like, for new housing, is there a consideration for houses which are part-time vacation and second homes? Is the disscalable? Well, some mechanism would be required, so to evaluate and monitor, so at what point do we go, I mean, so what do we do with that?
So you can give us direction that we want to have that discussion at the public hearing. We want to focus on that item, because that's not in the report right now.
Okay.
So consider that what we're doing in the report is, like, for a single-family home, we'd be per unit, okay? So just, and not like per bedroom, so that's another important feature. So if something got remodeled to a significant increase in bedrooms...
Right.
We wouldn't be having a fee, because it's not a new unit, and so there's some...
Bedroom cost.
Redevelopment of existing properties, which is, we've got kind of a unique situation here at Avalon. When you're in other communities, you can build whole subdivisions, and there's lots of development, lots of impact from that new sprawl that's happening here. We have infill, which is good, that we're having infill and not having, but some of those are adding sometimes four, five people, you know, in those new bedrooms, and those are definitely impacts. It may not be an impact of new golf cart, but there's new sewage, there's, you know, there's new, you know, capacity of parks. There's so, there's pieces of that, so that could be a scaled factor, say, we had a bedroom, and it may not be a full, it's a partial of a unit, or something, so that you also could grab on to that infill development, and you want to give maybe an advantage to infill, infill development. If that's what you feel like should happen, then it would just be a factor of that. So we can work on those details for you, if you just say, "Hey, this would be important for us to hear this," and we can come up with some numbers. And maybe that causes us not to get done at the public hearing, but we can keep on this thing, you know, for every meeting until we get there, is what I'm saying. So just lots of details.
Because...
Okay, but I'm also in for getting this done on the second.
Well, sure.
Yeah, me too.
And I know Councilmember Hernandez wants to see it get done.
I know. But I mean, I, I think these considerations are what need to be considered. And so, but, and you're saying that we need to provide you the guidance, or just to get the answers, and you tell us what the possibilities are?
Okay, if you want me to go through every one of these and give you possibilities, I can do that.
Okay, well, I, I don't think we should do it tonight, because I don't...
No, no, I'm saying that...
But if we go through these, and if there's people in the audience that are interested in reading these and going, "Oh, yeah, I think that would be good." Um, and I know that it, comments or, or questions or areas you'd like us to tell you sooner than later, I know, because you're, I know. So I would like to be able to look at this, and the other only things that I have is that, that I just, I mentioned to you even briefly, um, if you're, if you're, if it's low and moderate income housing, or it's accessory dwelling units, or the inclusionary housing... or the inclusionary housing, how is that impacted by these fees?
Okay, I gotta make sure that that's included, we'll have that answer for you.
Okay, and then the other thing I just want is the council to discuss, being able to put us a percentage of this money aside for, like, arts and entertainment or something?
So that is handled usually with an in-loe fee, okay? So that's outside of the development impact fees. But you can actually, when I was at another agency, we had an in-loe fee, and it was, like, a developer would come in, and they said, 1% of the cost of your development would be an in-loe fee, if you didn't put art in your own frontage of your development. And of course, this is a community with shopping centers and everything else, but at the entrance of that shopping center, we'd have, you know, maybe some significant piece.
But if somebody's building two or three bedrooms, or whatever, and we're giving fee, I would rather, because we're not gonna see a lot of that. Our big projects are gone, other than maybe some major housing. And I think Derek, like I said, they're already planning on doing some stuff, maybe not arts, but I personally would like to see, on this total amount, we at least get a percent for whatever we wanna call it, on all these.
So, yeah, that may not be a development impact.
Yeah, just gotta go back into the infrastructure, right?
So, I'll make that request to city attorney as we go through this next week, and our consultant to weigh in, to give you, give you some background on that, and what's legal to do, okay?
But I hear what, I...
Okay.
And just so we know, we've noticed a public hearing on, you know, the approval of these fees for the next meeting. So if there's a lot of questions, and we need to kind of consider things and move things around, what we would have to do is, we'd open that public hearing and then continue it, if we're not ready to answer all the questions that come up.
We could still receive all the public comments, in case we had to ask them one more, right?
Right. Because if, when those two come back, they're gonna be hitting with pretty cold turkey as well.
Yes.
And...
And there may be more.
So it might not go as quickly as...
And there may be more development, yeah, it might quickly, you have three years later, five years, I think.
So, I mean, if there's just anything else that kinda pops out that you wanna see, we'll work on those. So, you know, what you see here is, it has been answered by the consultant, that's what you see here, and, and really, it was not something to be added back into the report to change the report that you were gonna adopt. The things that needed to be changed that came up, we did change. And so, really, this is what the community has presented, we made the changes in regard to that, and then we're asking, is there something else? Now here's your shot. Here's what the community said, here's the report, is there something else you're seeing there?
Right. Now, Ole, you had, you had, prior to the meeting, before the meeting started, you made some comment to Bob about parking and some of those kinds of things.
Yeah, and if we have the ability to waive the fee, if we don't issue any park stickers, so people can't park.
And the answer was yes?
Yeah. I thought I read here someplace that the development fee has to be spent within five years?
Yes, but, there's, so we have a report that comes out every five years to state, you know, what we've done. Every year we come and report to council, what's in the fund, what we've collected, and what projects we've spent on. But at the end of five years, we need to have that accounting that said, if we collected that dollar, what have we done with it, so that we show that we've made progress, it's not just sitting in a fund. And, if you're aggressive with these fees, and you've got matching funds, and you're moving through this, and definitely, you're almost spending every dollar that comes in, because they're usually matching up on projects that you're getting with grant funds also, because this doesn't pay for the deficiencies in there. We have to bring those deficiencies in. Good example, if you don't have enough, we're deficient on parks, how do we pay for all that? Because we'd have to raise some of those funds ourself, okay? But, that's, you know, working with Dan, we're gonna go out and we're gonna get some grant funds, there's state and federal funding, so, that's where the question mark is, where is all this other money coming? Well, we need to get aggressive, and it becomes a, you know, multi-fund package to get these things done, just like sewers and water. There are agencies out there that are giving grants.
And however, if we end up getting land, let's say, that we don't have to pay for, you can still, you still, you don't have to do this totally, you can negotiate something different?
So, every development that comes up to you, you can make a decision on what to do with fees, and waive, and I'll let city attorney, but, you know, every, I mean, you have the power to determine what the terms are in those developments.
Yeah, basically what the report says is, it provides what the fees, the fees, our proposed fees are, and you can go lower than the fees. You can't go higher, go lower.
This is a method to streamline even the development, because it says to the developer, if you come in, you do all these, and you meet these, usually what it does is it makes your environmental document easier, if you can, then you're not out there studying, what's traffic impacts, what's, what's the park impacts? It's, we've already stated it, and if you pay these fees, usually a developer will come in and you say, if you meet all those, pay those fees, you've met those mitigations. Makes your development easier to do.
Yeah, yes.
Here's something off the wall. We have a couple of DDAs out there. Do we know what these, how these fees tie to those? Define development agreements.
Okay. Who do we have those with?
But you can't do it for ones that have already existed?
The last development agreement that we did was 20 years ago, and that's not really gonna be relevant.
It wasn't 20 years ago.
Yeah.
Hamilton?
Are you referring to Hamilton, so their next phase?
Yeah, the next phase.
The phase two or three, or whatever it means.
Would it apply to their next phases?
I'm not saying that applies, but the fees here are lower than the ones in the DDA. Would that apply? And I don't know.
I'd have to look, probably not. If the development agreement set forth what the fees are in the development agreement, then that's an agreement, is done, period.
Okay, so we're not leaving it on the table?
So this is just for future development?
So if you had a new development, and it was, say, on the site, you know, that somebody came in, and now you have development impact fees to take care of, and the development agreement wouldn't be as large. At least it would take care of those issues in the development agreement.
Right, okay.
We've carved out these 10 categories, and said, this is how we're gonna handle them. And one of the categories, it's still not there, and I don't have all the projects, and it's really, I need to ask city attorney, is the water, okay? And being able to fund the piece of the water for capacity, okay? Whether that's just solely something that SCE needs to do, or whether it could be something that the city, just like you gave money for the Dcel plan, and here it is, is do you collect, and then out of that, they get an allocation. So it's just a method of being able to do that, simply that you're facilitating that, okay? So, if that's of interest, we can look into that, too. But that's one of the things I had talked about before, but as I was working through it with a consultant, he was going, mm, we need to check with SCE and how that works.
Well, I mean, that's where I look to the consultants to say, yeah, you should be doing that or not, because what do I know?
Okay.
You know?
So that's what we are checking, I did ask the consultant to check into that, but you won't see it here yet.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, but, like I said, even when we get done with this and adopt, we always could go back and add something.
Right, okay. Great, thank you, Bob, this has been a lot of work, and thank Michael Baker, too.
We're getting there.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
May not be here next year, but...
All right, so we'll visit this again, and now we will be going into closed session?
Yeah, we have two closed sessions. We have a claim by Rayland Lewis, and conference with labor negotiators to five representatives unions, or organizations.
Thank you, everybody, and good night, Tony.
Look at Craig, your timing is...
Yeah, that's who we missed.
Chief Craig, can we have an update?
Do you wanna do your report out?
I just thought I was here.
And we're back from closed session. City Attorney?
Yeah, we have one reportable action on number one, the Rayland Lewis matter against the city of Avalon. Council unanimously approved to settle the matter, which is a slip and fall for $25,000. Claim alleged that the city was negligent in its condition of public property.
There's no other comments? Mean adjournment.